About to call the county commission meeting for July 21st order. Would you leave some prayer Commissioner Buckner?
Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for all the blessings you give us this day and throughout our lives, Father. We thank you for the opportunity we have here to come represent this county. We pray that the things we say and do tonight will be in accordance with thy will, Father. These blessings of asking, crashing, amen.
Everyone stand for the pledge.
We legislate to the spirit of the Bible, United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Britt.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Groh. Ms. Gray.
Do have a quorum. Good to see you all here tonight. First order of business is the approval of the minutes. The first minutes are from the May 19th, 2025 regular session. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Petty, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next of minutes is the June 2nd special call meeting that was fought to approve the budget. Open the floor for a motion. Much like Commissioner Simpson, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number two is public comments. We have fourteen people signed up for our rules of that to get everyone in. That will give each two minutes apiece. I'll call you up. I'll be keeping the time. When you get within ten seconds, I'll raise my hand and then you got ten seconds to wind it up. First person signed up is Joshua Denton.
Good evening. My name's Joshua Denton. I'm an attorney. You've gotten some correspondence from me over the last month or so. I represent my firm and I represent Mr. Steve Knute and we are in opposition to the rezoning request on Nubbin Ridge Road from A1 to C1. I'm not going to obviously in two minutes try to recap what I put forth in our letters, but I do just want to draw your attention to the fact that approving the rezoning really will not fix the ongoing problem there at the site. And we detailed that in the letter today that was sent to you all. We also had the letter of June 17th that outlined additional issues and problems with the requested rezoning. In particular, the real problem here, aside from the illegal spot zoning that we've detailed in the correspondence, is that your all zoning ordinance in and of itself speaks to fabricated metal products, which is in M1, the M1 zone, which is the heavy industrial zone. And so C1 does make limited allowance for agriculturally oriented commercial and light industrial, but not that heavy industrial that goes with the metal fabrication. So we addressed that in the letter from today and for all those reasons and the reasons in our prior correspondence, we'd ask that you deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denton. Next name is Ashley Moffett.
Hi, I'm here again. I, just to reiterate against it, we moved out there. We bought the property. Before all of that, the buildings were up, the factory was running. It was a small little wooden building when we moved in. We didn't know it was gonna become a huge commercial thing. And my biggest thing is we're really popular with our Dollar Generals and Mexican restaurants. And I don't want in 20, 30 years for that commercial site to be able to be converted to that. That street is a bunch of families and a bunch of fields. And I don't want to see it commercialized. I moved out to the country to be in the country and everyone I've talked to also is like, that doesn't sound commercial. So I don't really know all that. I'm just a teacher, fifth grade, nothing big, but it doesn't sound right. No one I've talked to says it sounds right. So I hope you guys see that and maybe that attorney got through to somebody and you're like, oh, maybe it's not right. I don't know. I don't know. But thank you for your time and God bless.
Thank you. Next name is James Root.
Good evening. Um, that's my daughter. So something I had a lot of notes written down and quite honestly, I just, I, my main point is, you know, one thing I want to make sure we understand is this isn't personal. I heard a lot of people talk about what great business they run and I'm a builder. I moved, I bought the land about seven years ago. Went to codes, talked to them about what I wanted to do, what I needed to do as far as following the rules. And though I built a house, my son moved out there, my daughter moved out there, my middle daughters wanting to move out there. So when we went through everything, I wanted to put a fence up, went to codes, got conflicting information. So I went back to make sure that I was doing the things that were right. I moved out here because I wanted to get away from the big city. I work in the big city. I work at Opryland right now. I've worked at Vanderbilt. I see the things that change. And to be honest with you, I lived in Clarksville for 30 plus years, saw Clarksville change in a negative way. A lot of things get condensed. And as I watched Dixon, I thought this was a good place to come to get away from that. And quite honestly, that's what we were hoping to do. Got 43 acres out there. It's not a lot, but kind of building a homestead. Was hoping to keep it that way. I've got 10 grandkids now. Last time we met, I had nine. With that being, my main point is if we set a precedence today to change how Dixon runs, what are we doing for the future? And are my kids going to be my grandkids? Are they going to be in a place that's going to continue to be what it was instead of what the city's becoming? Spot zoning, legal matter, that's up to you guys. You have to make that decision. But I do know the small decisions we make today make a large impact tomorrow. So I would ask you guys to consider that when you make this decision tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name is Kevin Minor. Thank you. Next name is Dwight Corbett.
My name Dwight Corbett, been down on Yellow Creek for about 30 years. Nothing has changed in the last month. Very good business, big business. Those buildings were there, that industrial site was there when all these people moved in recently. And like to ask you, you know, what's going to happen when the next guy moves in from Florida or California and wants a zoning change? The easiest way to put this to rest is go ahead and approve the zoning for commercial. Let everything go on just like it is and they're good business, good people to do business with, and I don't see any reason to change a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name is Larry Street.
My name's Larry. Y'all know me. All these people that's, I don't understand this place has been there since 2009. And nobody's ever fussed about it. Nobody's ever said a word about that place. You know, and you can't, I can't stand here and tell y'all, and I don't believe any of y'all could tell me that somebody didn't know about that place being built. I don't know how you get by without it. You know, they've been there, they've been doing this job. They don't bother anybody. They got several people works for them. They pay taxes with Dixon County. So why is it all of a sudden everybody's against them? These people that they moved in there, that place has been there a long time. I deal with them. They're good people. They treat you good. So I don't understand that, that all of a sudden this comes to be a big deal. And they talk about spot changes and, and commercial. There's a lot of commercial spot changes in Dixon County. So you can't deny somebody something and you've already approved it. So if it's, you're going to deny them, what are you going to do about it? So I don't, I don't see that, that it's been any problem with them until now. And I don't, I asked you to vote for passing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on the list is CW Wade.
I'm CW Wade. I got no problem with the Tennessee Steel peelers. The, the problem is the people in the 53, two years I've been living out there has moved in, the other people. That's where the traffic's coming from, not from Tennessee Steel. I moved out there on that ridge and there was two houses down below me. Now there's about 12 that's been built out there in the last, last few years. I got no problem with them boys. They do a good job. I hope that they continue on doing. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next name is Julie Beller. Okay. Next name is Nelson Pierce.
Thanks, Nelson Pierce. Not a, not a personal matter. To me, it's, it's, it's a matter of setting a precedent. I'm sure people here in this body and people here have all built houses in the last few years since 1989, when these rules went into effect that everybody's supposed to follow. And I'm pretty sure you did a part, bought permits and paid impact fees and did everything the way you're supposed to. But it just scares me the fact that how do you tell the next person that comes in and buys a parcel of property next to your house or next to your property that they just do what they want and then get permission later? That's the scary part to me is that setting a bad, setting a bad precedent. That's the way I see it. There ain't nothing personal. But I see it as a not setting a good precedent for the future. I mean, how do you, how can you tell the next person that buys some property, they can't do what they want? That's my only issue with the whole deal.
Thank you. Next, next name is Gary Baker.
Thank y'all again for letting me speak. I spoke the last time. Oh, I've repeated the same thing I said last time. A lot of people you've heard here tonight don't live where I live. I'm the closest people to the operation Tennessee Steel Buildings. My concern is we have a small community at Edgewood. There are families raising children there. We have a church there. It's quiet. It's been that way forever, except when the sawmill was there. On the same property where it's still building places now. I'm not an expert at all on zoning. Now I have to leave that to y'all. But I, I know if, if this goes to commercial, what's next? You know, what are we going to have on the corner? Seven 11? Something else, something worse? People come to Edgewood to live a quiet country life. I'm just asking y'all to respect that. And I guess the other main concern, you can already see, the last time I talked about the bridge down at Yellow Creek and Edgewood intersection, I don't know if it's still buildings, trucks, or there are contractors that come in and out or what, but that thing's been torn up many times and it's been repaired again by the county, I guess. I don't know how long that's going to keep continuing. One other thing, the only thing I'd like to see happen here is legality, take presidents. Each T crossed, each I dotted, that we do everything legal and everything about these people be checked about legality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name is Michael Adams.
I'll be brief. I'm against the Tennessee Steel Buildings rezoning. I have been there seven generations. So I've been there as long as anyone. And one of the reasons why I think people are up in arms is because they continue to expand. I think I saw some asphalt going in last week. More impervious surface, more runoff. I think that's what's really got a lot of people up in arms because, because it's continued to expand. It's not a little operation. Eighty-five employees? That's more than some of the industries in Dixon have. That's like a branch of Tinsco. Traffic yesterday morning before 10 o'clock, I counted almost 14 installed vehicles going right by my house. It is a seven day a week industrial site. We're here, final point, because the county did not do their jobs. And now we're being told to eat this. That is unacceptable. Thank you.
Next name, and excuse me all this, I think it's, is it Hudson or Houston Maloney? Am I saying that correctly? Oh, I recognize who y'all are. No, you didn't, did you? Uh, William Flanagan. Okay. Well, there's only one left. Does Scott Beller want to speak? Thank you.
I'm Scott Beller. I live on Yellow Creek and there's a couple of things I want to address that have been brought up in previous meetings that we went through. Number one, traffic in the guard rail. Since last meeting, there's been an email sent to all the suppliers of Tennessee Steel Buildings. They have been told that they will be held accountable for hitting the guard rail if they hit the guard rail. And they're also receiving an escort to help them navigate the turn to get back on Yellow Creek or to take May Road so that we don't tear the guard rail up. That has been done and that is in place. Buying land, I spoke about this last time. Anybody that's been there, you got a right to fuss, but if you come there after they've been there and been operating, they've been there since oh nine. We got no right to fuss if we've come there and we knew it was there. Commercial taxes, they've been paying commercial taxes to the county on the block of land where they manufacture. We've took their money. And now all they're asking for is the commercial zoning. Jobs, the jobs are the jobs. There's a lot of people that depend on that for a living and that's just as important to one as it is to the other. Fire protection has been talked about and been discussed. I met with Danny Tucker, our fire chief at Yellow Creek. He helped me with a plan to provide fire protection to Tennessee Steel Buildings. He's going to come back and take me on a tour of the Garner's Creek Camp and show me the same system and same setup that they're using there. M1 statement, I heard somebody comment about this being M1 instead of commercial. I have a cousin who owns a gutter business. He takes a piece of flat stock, runs it through a machine, it makes a six inch gutter. That's basically the same principle we're talking about here. They take flat stock, they run it through a machine, it forms it. If that, if that's considered M1 industrial, how do we go out on the job site at a residential house and do that without hard hats and steel toe shoes? That, that's not, that's not industrial, commercial.
Mr. Beller, you've got your two minutes. I'm sorry, but thank you. That ends the public comment phase of this meeting. Next item of business is committee reports. Is there any committee report? Yes, Ms. Gray.
I sent out the quarterly reports from the Humane Society. I sent them all out. Friday, I think I did. My, my brain's a little hazy. I've had a grandchild since then, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So if there's any questions about that, just let me know.
Thank you. The other, before you is from, this would I guess be technically from the finance committee from Tennessee Controller of the Treasury where our budget review was reviewed by them that you passed back on June 2nd and they found it, wrote you a letter of commendation on your work that that's been successfully done. So thank you, thank elected officials and thank the directors and staff that made that happen. Is there any other committees to report? Hearing none. Next item is appointment sanitation board. Mr. Robert Wettero is up for reappointment. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Buckner, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote with stating aye. Opposed? Thank you. Item number five, public hearing or rezoning request for Boni George Tax Map 139, parcel 30.07, 9.20 acres, Highway 48 South Dixon, Tennessee, A1 agriculture to C2 general commercial, second district. Highway forty-eight South Dixon, Tennessee, A one agricultural to C two general commercial, second district. Uh, Ms. Trace.
This rezoning request is just off of Interstate forty on Highway forty-eight South, next to the Dollar General. They would like to open an RV and camping facility. Included in your packet is a proposed site plan and traffic impact analysis. It would also require the Board of Zoning Appeals to grant a special exception request. The Dixon County Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request at the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. For the public hearing, uh, no one signed up to speak on this, so the public hearing is over. Next item of business is resolution staff for South Star Tax Increment Financing. Have here with us now Terry Malone, our Economic Development Officer. Let her come up and give you a brief overview of that.
I provided on your area before you got here, a short handout that broke down the tax increment financing for the town of Burns, uh, road for around two hundred new homes to be built. Uh, this tax increment financing request is meant to help with infrastructure around the neighborhood. We took this to the Industrial Development Board last week where they approved and recommended for your consideration.
This is again the area between Highway ninety-six and Old East Side Road. Uh, this is what this does. It's a cooperative effort with the town of Burns, uh, to provide a tax increment financing to improve Old East Side up to county and city standards to manage this neighborhood. Uh, the debt will be paid with the improvement from the tax increment financing, uh, the county and the city to do that. The town of Burns and the county, uh, and it was approved unanimously by the Industrial Development Board. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. So Ms. Malone. Be glad to open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner McElwain. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. That's Mr. Grove. Next to items, Economic Housing Development Corporation Pilot Policy, uh, Ms. Malone.
Uh, provided part of your packet that was sent out, there was a, uh, policy, uh, for the pilot that the new Economic and Housing Development Corporation has approved at their level. I have Betsy Knotts here. She helped draft this, uh, policy. So if you have any questions, uh, she's more, uh, in tune with the legal language. But our request tonight, based on the recommendation of the Economic Housing and Development Corporation, is for you guys to approve the pilot policy for their use.
Any question for Ms. Malone? About so is Betsy Knotts.
She's in the corner.
Oh, there you are. Yes. We really appreciate Betsy working with this. Uh, before she went over to the dark side and worked for an attorney. She worked for the Controller's Office, State of Tennessee. So she's been looking at our stuff for years. And, uh, now that she's on the good guys team, helping us instead of beating us up. But we really appreciate your work and the work you do with your law firm. Uh, they, they're the ones who helped set this up. So thank you for your work on this. Open floor for motion. That was a motion by Commissioner Grove. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Malone. Next item is transfer of Burns property. This is what, uh, was offered us by the town of Burns. There's not a resolution for this. Uh, it simply will be done by a quick claim deed. This is the property at the corner of Highway forty-seven and Maple Grove Street, I believe is the name of that, uh, that's, uh, adjourned to our convenience there and there in Burns. So all we need is a vote from this body to, uh, accept that property via quick claim deed. I do need a motion and a second to do that. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by, because that Commissioner Ledger, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Grove, Commissioner Grove. Item number four is contract between Dixon County Sheriff Office and Flock. This was pushed down at one time, but this is a resolution authorized the county to enter into a contract with Flock Group LLC. Would y'all like a, I know it's been a minute since the sheriff's been here. Look, if you don't mind, give us a brief explanation of what we're doing.
Uh, this is for, uh, license plate recognition, uh, equipment. We're proposing, uh, twelve sites, major entry exit points to into Dixon County. It looks for, it's not a speed enforcement type, uh, camera system. It looks for stolen vehicles. If we've got a warrant on somebody, we can put, and we know their vehicle, amber alerts, silver alerts. Uh, that is what it, that is what the system looks for. Uh, the total cost of that is going to be thirty-six thousand. And, uh, we run into a purchasing issue as to whether it should be bid, sole source that. Uh, there is a, uh, I talked to, uh, Ms. Carey, our auditor. And we are a member of a group called Omnia. It's like a purchasing cooperative. Am I saying that right, Mr. Reagan? And so, uh, Cheatham County used Omnia to purchase their system recently. And so that was sort of the big hiccup with it, but, uh, I believe it would make Dixon County, uh, a safer town. I believe it'll increase the, it's a false, uh, force multiplier. Uh, for us, like I say, all we're doing is looking for somebody that's on what they call the hot list. Stolen vehicle, person with a burglary warrant, murder warrant, whatever. And then we'll get an alert and send a deputy real time to search the area, so.
Thank you. And I think the discussion was this is not a speeding ticket situation, or you'd already heard from me, so. Any questions for the sheriff?
Yes, yeah.
It only looks for the, the plates that y'all put in the system. So it's not recording just random plates.
No, it, it checks metadata. It turns your tag number, that tag number into metadata and it looks over here to this other database. And it says, is this on the hot sheet? We can manually enter tags in there and we can attach it to the national, what's called NCIC, the hot list. So if it's somebody wanted for murder out of Dallas, Texas, and they drive through, we'll get an alert. There's some other verifications have to be done before traffic stops conducted. Uh, there's a lot of regulation. Uh, as a matter of fact, the council is already, uh, started on, uh, you know, throwing some policy ideas to make sure it has limited use to who can actually get in there. It doesn't run and, and record your registration or anything like that in the system. It just says, is tag one, two, three, is it on the hot list? If it's on the hot list, it sends an alert. If it doesn't, typically that data is not, by state law can't be kept for more than ninety days. But I think most LPR systems, about thirty days, or if you had to do like what they call a history search for a tag, maybe you get information about a tag, about a crime that happened two weeks ago. Then we can ask, have you seen this tag? But that data is not kept very long.
Any other questions for the sheriff?
Camera.
Be a lot of trouble, Mr. Dawson. It's a whole different, that's a whole different.
That's a lot of, um, that's, that's a lot of revenue.
Hey, sure. It's against the law, states, it's on the school zone.
I don't want to see taxes go up again. And that'd be a good, good reason for it.
Who, uh, uh, who's regulating it? Does it go to the nine-one-one call center? Do we pay a third party? Is that a regular in a call?
That's all inclusive. There, there's no charge from the TBI to have the data downloaded. In dispatch, uh, it'll, it'll be almost like, like a little icon, just runs in the background. I believe the city of Dixon is also purchasing fourteen or sixteen, uh, of the same vendor, which is Flock and, uh, cause it's the actually least expensive system out there. But, uh, they will get an alert. It's just, they'll get a, they'll get a hit like if they run a tag and they come back with the NCIC hit, this thing will pop up and say, hey, you have a LPR hit on a, on a amber alert or a kidnapped suspect vehicle. And then, then they will vet that and dispatch that, so.
Any other questions for the sheriff? That was a good one. We'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of voting stating aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item is a resolution to amend the official zoning map at Dixon County, Tennessee, as adopted in Article five, section five point oh two oh of the zoning resolution of Dixon County, Tennessee by rezoning fifteen point nine four acres comprised of a portion of parcel thirteen point oh four of tax map oh sixty-nine from A one agricultural district to C one rural center district. This is the rezoning request that we considered last month at the public hearing and it was moved tonight to a final decision. Uh, we've heard additional comments tonight from the public on this item. Does the applicant wish to make any presentation at this time? Are there any questions for the counsel of the applicant from the commission? Thank you. Are there any, uh, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Way big.
Sorry to make you get up there.
You would. And when we have discussion tonight, uh, please make sure you use the microphones that we have folks say, they couldn't hear last time.
Yes, sir. I, I know the location of where the applicant's business is, is not on sewer. Is there? What is the plan for, I mean, if you've got eighty-five to a hundred employees, what is the plan?
They currently have an approved septic tank plan that's been approved by the county health department. And again, my name is Jim Murphy. I'm representing the applicant because Mr. James is unable to be here because of a health condition. So I apologize for him not being here and you have to deal with me. But yes, they've got an approved, uh, septic tank, uh, system that's been approved by the county health department.
Okay.
So that's already in place.
Okay.
And that also is something, when the, if the rezoning passes, the next step will be going back to the planning commission to have a site plan approved. Then all that will again be relooked at at that point to make sure that they've got everything in place that they need.
Um, and there's been some confusion about, I'm hearing different dates about when the business actually was up and running. And I know the applicant submitted warranty deeds that were like dated twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. Um, so can you tell me for sure, when did the applicant start his business?
I'd have to ask Rob. You got that?
Robert James. I'm with James West Associates and, uh, I, I think the original development there was volunteer veneers and they were around, it was around two thousand and seven that that was in operation. And then around two thousand and eighteen or nineteen would be when, um, Tennessee Steel Buildings would have begun operations. It's sort of taking that over from volunteer veneers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We'll point out two septic systems are done by the state of Tennessee and the county on, on that, but I know that was just a football player. Thank you. Does our counsel, Mr. Mills, there you are, you're right in front of me. I can't see you. Would you like to make any comment on this?
Commissioners, good evening. Um, I'm not going to go through the process like we did last month, but this came through planning commission twice. First time planning commission made a favorable recommendation. It had to go back down to the planning commission. After, um, that meeting, it made a unfavorable recommendation. It came to this body for public hearing last month and now it's here before you. Uh, to remind the body, uh, this was all started because in November, the county issued a notice of violation letter to the property owner and a corrective action plan. Step one in that corrective action plan was to seek a rezoning to the county. Uh, so that's why you're seeing it here tonight, uh, is the culmination of step one. If this body chooses to approve the corrective action plan, the rezoning before you, and that's step one. They would have to continue on down with a site plan, traffic impact study and applicable, uh, building permits. If this body chooses to deny, uh, this rezoning request, you're authorizing the county to take action uh, against this, uh, business on the property if they don't cease operation, uh, as they are currently outside of permitted uses in A one. That's why they're seeking permitted uses in C one. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Please, Commissioners, thank you.
The, our zoning, planning zoning, but I have a couple of concerns, not really questions, but, uh, it's detailed into in the final, uh, vote that they're supposed to have a, and I won't read the whole thing. I'll just read this line that caught my attention. Us rezoning this from A one to C one would be the first step into bringing this business into compliance. So what does that mean after that, after the first step?
Commissioner, um, in order for them to bring the property into compliance, they have to be, um, zoned appropriately for their uses as described to the county, but they also need a site plan. This is a site, uh, that has activity on it of a, a commercial or light industrial nature. And then they have to do building permits for any buildings that have been built out there. And a traffic impact study to look at the impact to the infrastructure of the county and the improvements they would have to make to that site. That is a multi-month, multi-meeting process, typically through staff and planning commission. This body would not see this project again with the planning commission.
So if I understand you right, if we approve this, the company will have to come back in front of the planning zoning. And those members of the planning zoning will have to prove what they bring in front of you.
Correct.
If they deny it, if they come back and they deny the site plan and the traffic study and all that, where does that leave us by approving it? Are we, do we overrule them? Say, this, this is something that's, we've seen before in my years. We've got a body in place to take care of these matters. It's just like the school board. And if we don't, if they don't agree with us or we don't agree with them, that's, you know, that poses a problem.
I understand.
And I like to be on board with the one, have the following the steps. And if they've denied this, but if you do, if they're going to do what you just told me, if they have to come back with all this other, back in front of our planning and zoning, I think I could be on board with it then, but they would have to approve it to make it a final approval, right?
Multiple steps, but that is correct. And, and that brings up a good point, Commissioner. The purpose of the vote today, y'all are determining if a C one zoning designation is appropriate for this parcel. That's the scope of what you're looking at. What's there, where it's located, what improvements are made to public infrastructure? That happens at the planning commission and planning and zoning level after, but only if this body chooses to approve it. If this body chooses to deny the rezoning application, they need to cease operation or the county needs to take action. Thanks.
Andrew, for counsel.
Andrew, do you feel like the C one is appropriate for that business?
Yes.
If, um, what, what's the first step before going to planning and zoning? Do you go ahead and start dirt? Do we got a grading plan or anything in place?
No, there is no grading plan or anything in place. They would have to come in with a site plan like it's a commercial site.
I'm talking about in general. Do, does the county got a grading plan in effect before you get grading permits, before you start construction?
In terms of the, the process?
Site plan, yeah.
Normally you're going to have to get some approval of some kind before a grading permit, because you know, you're, you're at a vesting document, right? Either preliminary plat or a site plan. And then there's all the construction documents in between, which can include a, a grading permit. And then you're trying to build towards the final plat or in the case of a site plan, it acts as the final plat. But they would not be able to get a grading permit unless and until they've submitted some document that gives the county the authority to issue them a grading permit. If that.
Well, yeah, and I understand that because we kind of went through this a few months ago and I don't remember the details, but I remember that somebody wanted to rezone for a Dollar General in Vanley. And they come before us and they'd already started grading. I, I remember that. And it was like, why did you start the grading permit before it come to us for the rezoning? Mr. Petty, while ago, spoke on the public hearing on the rezoning or the grading, wanting to have a grading permit on the land at forty-eight and Interstate. And I'm pretty sure I went by there yesterday and they had. And I'm pretty sure I went by there yesterday, and they had already graded and started the construction on it before they come before this county body for approval on the rezoning. So it seems like we're keep on making mistakes, somebody over and over and over is starting construction before they're going through the right steps. Whose job is that to make sure that don't happen?
Well, and to clarify, some tracts of land, if you can get a grading permit from T D A C. If it's over an acre, you've got to go get T D A C approval to disturb more than an acre. And you may not be coming with any development plans at that point. So there's no governing, local governing body to come to. Does that make sense? So sometimes people are going to grade and nothing else happens. But in terms of what the county looks at, we can only look at what applications come into us, get reviewed and approved, and you go through the construction process.
And it seems like for some reason that people are already spending tons of money on property that come before us and saying, well, we've already done all this dirt work. We've not really got it rezoned, but now we need y'all to rezon it. To me, that's kind of backwards.
I understand. I mean, we'd have to look at the individual instances. I haven't reviewed those, the ones you've just brought up, and see what happened, and we can certainly get you an answer on that. But all I can do is describe the general process.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills? Yes.
Mr. Mills. I know I stated before that I don't view this as a light industrial factory, sixty, over sixty thousand square foot space. They, they heat up the metal, they cool it down with coolant. Where does the coolant water go when they're done with it? How do they dispose of it? Are they filtering it? We see that there's a problem with the infrastructure already and getting shipments and traffic into there. I mean, if you've got to have somebody that helps escorts the trucks into the business, there's a problem there. It's not, it doesn't seem to be set up already to be able to handle that traffic. I, I, I just really have a lot of concerns about this type of business operating in that location. This to me is still M one. It doesn't, for me, meet C one. And I think that is still the issue that I have, that I don't think this is a C one, this is M one, and it doesn't belong there.
There's a question for Mr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
I got one.
I'm sorry.
If you don't mind.
No, please.
And it really doesn't pertain to this, to this business. But, and I know we've done this in the past, and we've got, got hooked pretty good on some things. And I think this will, if it gets changed to this, I think the business will operate. But we've, we've, we have changed parcels of land in the past. And I, I know where one is right now. A man wants to put the commercial, and it's nothing ever been done. And this has probably been seven, eight years ago. And is there some kind of term limit, or not a term limit, I don't guess what it would be called, that you have amount of time to do what you're going to do with that parcel?
Not under current county regulations. I understand what you're asking. I've actually had to look at that before. That is not a mechanism available to the county right now.
Thank you.
Any questions for attorney? Yes, Commissioner Williams.
So I guess I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit if you don't want to answer it. Let's go through the process that the body rezones it. And planning commission says, oh, you got to put a turn lane. You got to build a water tank. You got to sprinkle a building. And this comes in at three, four, or five million dollars. And the applicant just says, well, we, we can't afford that. I mean, at what point then, I guess, do they, and they decide to walk? Or what recourse does the county have to then? You know, we have a piece of property sitting out there that's own, you know, commercial. And I guess I'm just trying to go through the process of what, what could happen.
No, I, I understand. Obviously, if, in your hypothetical, if the applicant down the road decides that this site is not viable because of what's in the traffic impact study or the site plan requirements, they still own the land. They, they own the land at this zoning, right? That's the purpose of this zoning at this stage is it would be zoned with these uses. They could sell it down the road. I mean, it's kind of getting to the free market. They're, they're free to do whatever they want with their land within county regulations. I think what you're asking, can the county take action on the rezoning down the road if you don't like what's going on there or that it's laid vacant? Maybe. Is, it depends, is the attorney answer, right? We'd have to look at it when the application came in. What is the purpose of the rezoning? Is it just this property? Is it multiple properties? I mean, it can kind of go down a rabbit hole. But that's something that can be a discussion if this lays, if they abandon this site and this body wants to look back at that. I'm not going to say you can't. I'm not going to say that's the best idea either. But that's something that can be looked at at the time, based upon the facts presented to us and whether or not it's a decision that can be made by this body. So I'm not closing that door legally. It's, it's available, but we just don't know where we're all going to be in five years.
Guess my follow up question would be that, is if they do walk away, can they, does the county have the right to rezone that back to A one without the applicant's request? Like once it's done been rezoned and they decide it's too, it's too expensive, we can't afford this, and we, we're going to walk? I mean.
This body has the authority to rezone property in Dixon County outside of municipal limits, whether it's one parcel or a thousand. I can't answer your question in this forum without knowing more details. It's possible, but it could have hurdles.
Other questions, Mr. Mills? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hearing no other questions. This was sent from the meeting from thirty days ago. It was passed, it was passed to move it to this meeting. So at this point in time, is there a motion to approve this rezoning? Motion by Petty, second by Dawson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Ledger, Mr. McElwain, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Dawson, Ms. Spicer, Mr. Buckner, Mr. Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Petty? Mr. Williams? Mr. Grove? Ms. Gray? Ten to two.
Ten to two. It passes. Next item of businesses, rezoning request for Boni George, tax map one thirty nine, parcel thirty point oh seven, nine point two oh acres, Highway forty eight, South Dixon, Tennessee, A one agriculture to C two commercial, second district. This is what you had the public hearing on a little earlier that was described by Mr. Hayes. The vote you're, it's being sought tonight. If it's so, if you so choose, let's move this on to the regular session in August on the third, Monday of August. Motion by Commissioner Ledger to have a second, second by Commissioner Petty. Any questions or discussion?
This is, this is the one I'm discussing. Haven't they already started to work out there? I mean, I was out there yesterday. They've got like dirt movers everywhere. They've moved a lot of work. Ain't that right there before, between the Dollar Store and the truck stop?
This is not, this, no, I'm sorry. There's not a public hearing. Be glad to, sorry, didn't mean to scare you there. Mr. Hayes can answer questions at the point.
This is representative for Mr. George, and he, he can answer any of your questions that, that you need.
It's a motor. Is that good?
I need a vote from you to suspend the rules to hear from a party. All in favor of vote, suspend the rules, vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Jared Gray, Civil Design Consultants, engineer of record for this proposal. And Mr. George is here as a property owner as well. I did ask him, he has not done anything on that property at all. And to my knowledge, there has not been any earthwork or anything like that that we're aware of on that property, period.
I live right up the road. No, they're building a thing in front of, on the other side of the street. This is on the, this is on the same side as the Dollar General store. There's a Dollar General store, a house, and then this, it used to be a trailer park.
Different problem.
Yeah, we are, we are immediately adjacent to the Dollar General.
Right.
That this track is immediately right next to it. Yeah. Again, all I can say is we have not begun construction at all.
Think owns it.
You got the questions?
What's going in there? The county, the only revenue that we will, will get off of will be the property tax, correct?
I'm not sure what the business is.
Oh, okay.
It's proposed for an RV resort. So we will have campers there. And it's set up essentially as an RV park. There will be some cabins for rent. There'll also be a small multipurpose building in phase two that, that is there for the use of the campers, et cetera. It's just an enclosed building. But that's essentially what we are proposing for this.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Of course, you have a motion and a second. Any other question, discussion? All in favor of moving this on to a next meeting on thirty days from today, vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next item, business approval notaries. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Tia Armstrong, Vance Harden, Jennifer Herndon, Misty Justice, Rebecca Reynolds, Andrea Tanner, Lisa Turner, Jan Weatherly, Brandon Whitaker, Miki Maker, Richard Wilson.
Motion by Commissioner Brett, second by Commissioner Stevens. All in favor of vote by stating aye? Opposed? Thank you. Next announcements. Any announcements? Yes.
Before we come back, Bob. You know, make sure you write that down.
You're here on the big list, so you, you missed a singing. You're screwed.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. So we won't do it. Well, happy birthday before.
Bob.
No singing. Well, I may call you that morning. Well, happy birthday to you. Any other announcements? Hearing no other announcements. Thought I had one other. Did somebody bring something up to me? Anything? Okay, that's cool. The last announcement will be the next regular session meeting will be on Monday, August eighteenth at seven PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, Four Quarters, South Charlotte, Tennessee.